Is Jack in?
I'm in.
Okay, hey, Jack. Okay. Very good. Very good, Jack. Okay, I'd like to call and order the Town of McCandless meeting for February 28th, 2022. Mr. Casey, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every justice.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Before we get started, Mr. Casey had a good idea and wanted me to say a short sentence or two that before we start tonight, we should all take a moment tonight or pray later. If you're so inclined for the Ukrainian people, what they're going through, how it affects those in our community, and we hope for a quick end to this war. Thank you for indulging me on that. As we get started, I read the same thing every time we are just so we know we're all here to work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we always do so as always with civility and respect because in the end we are all neighbors. Announcements, so we have two roadside litter cleanup events coming. One is April 9th and the other is April 23rd. If anyone in the community is interested in those, just go to the town website. You can sign up there. So, public comment for those that don't regularly attend the meetings. If you are a citizen and want to make a public comment on any item, please type your name in the chat box along with your address. And as each public comment item comes up, we'll give you the microphone request and you can comment in. So the first thing we have is just general public comment on agenda items that are in front of us this evening. So is there anything in the chat box?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. Okay. All right. Well, we'll have plenty other chances for public comments, so it might be a specific item coming up. Okay, let's move to number four on the agenda tonight. The meeting minutes were distributed and the meeting packets for the February 14th meeting. I imagine everyone had time to read those. Does anybody have any comments or edits or revisions that need to take place? Ms. Clunin?
Thank you. In the old minutes where the section that was talking about the support or not support for the new personnel committee. It said that, I believe it's a Casey Rappa, Casey Singer Clunin did not support five-year appointments. It just repeated Casey and I'm not sure if somebody was missing in there or if that was just a repeat of Mr. Casey's name. I didn't have it exactly in my notes, so I couldn't. But it just seemed a little off.
I don't recall, so maybe we would just assume that it was just a cleric where that we twice mentioned Mr. Casey.
This is Sandra. I will take a look at that and I will listen to the recording and make the appropriate revisions.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Sandra.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, seeing none. Guess we need a motion. How would we word that, Bob or Steve? To as revised or?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's good.
Jason Singer, I'll make the motion to approve the Town Council meeting minutes from the February 14th, 2022 meeting as revised.
Okay. Second, Ms. Clunin. Okay, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you. Onto reports of the committees. So the committee chair will take the host role and run through the run through the staff and liaison report. So the first one is administrative administration and finance committee. Mr. Casey, can you run us through these?
Sure. Well, do you want to start with the dashboard?
Sure. If you want to do the dashboard.
Do the dashboard.
Or the or the you can maybe do the check request first.
First, yeah. Does anybody have any questions relative to the nine million? Nine, nine thousand three hundred and six, nine thousand three sixty-six, five thirty-nine fifty-five as submitted to the council.
I had one, Mr. Casey.
Yes, sir.
Tricia, check number fourteen fifty-six. I wrote that down as a note. It seemed, can you read that and tell me what that's for?
Sure. If I real quick. Fourteen fifty-six is Wallingford's for thirty-nine sixty-three seventy-five. And at the
What was the description? Basically, I didn't understand what it was for from the description. Or the vendor.
Purchase order, and so it's for thirty-nine in total is thirty-nine sixty-three seventy-five. Is Sandy, can you let Jeff in real quick and just ask him if that's one of the items he's purchased?
He should be in.
If you turn on his mic. Because it's a PO, I'm thinking it's something from Public Works. I can check into that and get back to you, though, if he's not on and available to answer that.
Looks like the company provides logging materials or something, equipment.
We've got a couple pieces of equipment smaller that were in this beginning of the year, but I'll check into that mic and send you an email on it.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
I've checked. I've asked him to unmute his microphone.
Okay. If not, like I said, I'm happy to pull it up and email you.
There's hello.
Hey, Jeff. Was Wallingford's one of your purchase orders?
Wallingford?
Yes.
No, not that I'm aware of. No.
Okay, I'll look into that mic and get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the exception of that, I would like to make a motion to approve checklist the number one dated January 1st, 2022 to January 31st, 2022 totaling nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the Bolton Board and the town website.
Second.
Second. Okay, do we need public comment here, Steve? Not not for this. Okay. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Go ahead, continue, Jack.
Okay, let's look at the dashboard. If you'll notice, it's dated December 31st, which is standard operating procedure for the town because we include January and February's of the subsequent year so that we can include some accruals that come in. It was for things that accrued in in 2021, but because of the way everything, all the funds come in, et cetera, et cetera. It some of the funds and some of the budgets, some of the expenses come in late, so this will more accurately reflect what goes against the 2021 audit. So that's why it's done that way. And I would also like to note that if you notice in 2021 and 2022, we were at one hundred and four point six and one hundred and seven point two percent respectively on revenue and ninety point ninety percent and eighty-nine point two percent on expense. So I'd like to say that I think our previous council and Bob and Trish did a phenomenal job engineering us through the pandemic because these are really, really solid numbers. They did a terrific job there to be appreciated for it. I'm also confident that the 2021. But that actual audit will be done on time. As of today, it looked like there was only sixteen percent outstanding. So approximately approximately seventy-five percent of the audit has been completed and that would be in comparison to about fifty percent at this time last year. So I think Trish is doing a really good job with the support of her staff.
Mike, I was able to look up that purchase order. It was chains for the tires for the assuming the dump trucks. For the snow removal.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Tricia.
Does anyone have any other questions on the financial report? We went through the first day of the audit today and it was the auditors seemed very pleased with what they had available. They were on site today. They're going to work from home tomorrow and probably Wednesday because most of the items have been uploaded at this point. We have about six small items to do for the rest of the next two days. And then we have five items to complete the audit that are due on 3/28.
Trish, I had one quick question for you.
Absolutely.
It's just kind of like off the top of your head. Do you know what the total was that was spent for the winter festival? Because I saw two on the, you know, the statements for January, but I didn't know what the total was.
I don't have a total for that. I can certainly pull that together and get back to you. I'm going to estimate it's probably around less than twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, I was just curious since.
And most of that was fireworks.
Okay, good to know. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Casey, you want to continue for us with the liaison reports?
See here. I'm sorry, can continue with which?
I just call on each person under liaison reports, Jack, to give their
MTSA.
Summary. M I D A first. I don't know. Was there even a meeting?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, actually, there was a meeting. Mr. Casey. Kathy asked me to report on it very quickly. They did meet on February 23rd and the primary order of business for them was to reorganize for the year. There. Jerry Offens continuing to be the chairman, Mark Sullivan, the treasurer, Nick Mans, the vice chair, and Ben Gilberti, the secretary. There was some discussion regarding of updating their fees associated with borrowings, but no decision was made at this point.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
I have a question. Bob, how this this group only meets maybe twice a year? Is there another meeting scheduled?
At this point, no, there is not. They normally just meet if they have a request for a borrowing or some other administrative type function that they have to undertake that comes up, refinance or the like.
Thank you.
Okay, I got this figured out now, Mike. Mike, do you have a report on the North Hills Council Government?
There's not a February meeting. The organization meets quarterly and we had our last meeting in January. It was a reorganization meeting, so I don't have a report, but I will after the March one, and then I'll just continue on to the next one. The North Hills Regional Chamber of Commerce, Bob, Trish and I had a nice meeting with Jim Bolts, who's their executive director. We've been involved with the the chamber for about a year and a half, doing mostly subcommittee work. We felt we can get more out of the relationship. This was a very good first meeting. Bob can add in whatever he felt that initially the big picture conversations were just how could we support each other via media and in social media, like if a business is opening in McCandless, it's one of their members. You know, we know, or if we're doing events, you know, like the National Night Out or Winter Fest, that we get it on there on their media platforms. We both leverage that. Bob, did you want to add anything?
The only thing that I'll add at this point, Mike, is that John Bajarski, our communications individual has reached out previously, and I think Sandy had reached out previously to them a little bit. So we're going to formalize that relationship a bit more than what we have had. And I would agree with you, Mike, that it was a good first meeting. Gave us some ideas for moving forward, both from a standpoint of activities that could occur as well as how we can help each other with communication.
And then that concludes my report, Mr. Casey.
Okay, we have the report of the junior councilman, Gannon.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
You all have my report from last week. I would also like to add, since that report was submitted, another piece of politically relevant news came up on Friday, the Allegheny Council released our COVID numbers and we are in a low transmission rate, which means that starting today on Monday, North Allegheny is mask optional. So I will give you a report on how that goes after a month, but if anybody happens has any questions about that or what my report was about.
Again, and I have a question for you. In your report, you speak to the fact that the students are looking for participation efforts. And I'd like to point out that we do have two town cleanup scheduled here in April. That would be a wonderful support system for them to join and lend a hand, and we'll speak to that. I think we spoke to it at the beginning of this roadside litter events will be held on April 9th and 23rd at 10:00 AM. So if there's a way we can coordinate with the school and get as many students who are looking for those hours involved, that would be a wonderful thing we could help to coordinate.
All right. Yep, I will reach out to the it's not specifically it's the organization, but I'll reach out to them.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
There's also there's also a volunteer list that the activities committee has put together that you can have your name or any citizen's name on so that when an activity comes up, they reach out to them and say, hey, this is going on. Would you like to participate? That's also an option too.
Yeah, if I could tag on, I was going to say what Kim just said, but I would to add to that. I know we have on the AAC a committee member who works on maintaining that database, and I think it would be really it might be a neat volunteer opportunity for a student to work with her on the maintenance of that base and and working on getting word out and receiving the information. Sandra receives it and then passes it along, which is kind of a disjointed process, and hopefully we can clean that up a bit and someone can volunteer directly from our website soon enough. But that would be a great opportunity for a student and a great resume builder, too, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I love I we we used Honor Society volunteers for our first 5K last year, and they were a great benefit to the event. And I look forward to working with them again for many more events.
Okay, I'll try to work to streamline that volunteer process. And I'll pass that information on to the National Honors Honor Society and see if we can eliminate some of that friction in there.
Thank you.
All great ideas. Thank you, and thank you, Gannon. Now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Zachary.
Um, is there a zoning report, RJ?
Hello. Yes, so the planning commission recap memo should be in all of your packets. The only item that was on the previous agenda was the McCandless Square Phase Three Town Home Plan. That is going to be on the agenda for discussion and a potential adopting vote, approving vote later this evening when we get to the business agenda. I also did want to note, because I had discussed with Council President Tarrell earlier today, providing a brief update on these zoning ordinance modernization projects, since that is now underway and in the early stages. Well timed, because I received our engagement strategy draft document about an hour ago from our consultants. So just to give everybody kind of a general idea, we're looking at several blog posts coming up over the next year in a hub page on McCandless and Me. There's going to be a project page where people can do all kinds of things with, you know, a map activity, different surveys, you know, opportunities for different comments or submitting ideas. And the blog post will also be a way for the public to kind of keep up to date on, you know, sort of what's going on behind the scenes in between the public meetings. So next month, when that project page launches, more particularly, you can look for an overview of the project itself, kind of a why we're here as well as a sort of general schedule as we move forward for when each of those activities are going to be rolling out. So that should be online in March.
RJ, will that be on our website? Is that the plan for that?
Yeah, so that's going to be on the McCandlessandme.com engagement platform that we have.
Is there any way to also put that on our website, or is it only going to be through McCandless and Me?
Um, well, I it's so I am able to dynamically update the McCandless and Me page. I'm not able to update the website myself that requires coordination between the couple staff members. We would definitely like we have links to that and we can definitely post links and things like that. But we're trying to keep that hub page on our engagement website, just because that's also where people are going to be directed to do the participatory activities.
I understand. I just have concern because I mean, our our Facebook page has 4,000 followers, our YouTube has 30,000 views. But unfortunately, our McCandless and Me only has 268 subscribers.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
We need to make sure has engagement beyond the McCandless and Me, which is very limiting in our outreach, it seems right now.
Yeah, so the plan for anything that we post on McCandless and Me, and we haven't had too many active projects recently, but we always do this with our other channels, is we will make sure that we promote anytime there's an activity available. Those other platforms just don't really functionally have the tools that we do on McCandless and Me, which is why we push people towards that platform when it comes to doing those engagement activities, but like we'll publicize everywhere. There's going to be a couple places in town as well that we're going to be putting up QR codes and things like that. You know, we haven't talked to everybody, but some of the more frequently trafficked areas or in our public parks. So there are going to be a bunch of opportunities to drive people to get that information. We will make sure that it is hard to miss.
The next task force meeting is going to be April the 12th. Our first one was February the 8th. And I think you said everything I was going to, RJ, so.
Covered it all. Sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I'm going to have to talk to you, talk with you and figure out what the difference is between the zoning report and the planning commission report. So we don't duplicate services here.
Oh, yeah. Well, we honestly haven't had much of a narrative zoning report to the course previously. So we've sort of just turned that into the planning commission recap memo, but discussing with Mr. Tarrell earlier today, I think I'm going to start including a little bit of narrative about the zoning ordinance modernization project, just so you've got something on paper as well.
Okay, zoning hearing board, Councilmember Clunin.
Thank you. I I noted, I was hoping that the minutes from the January meeting might be included, but I believe they were not because they were not approved until rather late on February 23rd. It was a long meeting that they didn't make it in, but I will ask Christine that we I'm not sure if we can submit to town to council the draft minutes. Or if they need to be approved, just because we the zoning hearing board is so late before this meeting, and this has happened before. I guess that's a question.
Yeah, the if I could just jump in, the issue with this is particularly with the January meeting, there was an error with the video recording that we normally use to prepare the minutes. However, because these are legal proceedings, that's why we always have a transcriptionist on hand. So we are just waiting for the court reporter to get us those actual transcripts.
Okay, great.
Give you minutes. But typically, we would at least have the final draft that we could provide you all.
That's what I yeah, typically we have that, but I know everything was just because it's just a few days before this meeting. It's sometimes tough to get everything in. So that concludes the reporting, the zoning hearing board at this time.
Is there anyone signed up for public comment? No, ma'am. All right, then this concludes the planning and zoning committee.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Swiger for the recreation committee reports.
Okay, first up, we have activities advisory committee. You guys have the meeting summary notes from our February 7th meeting. The next meeting is March 7th. Does anyone have any questions or comments? No questions, no comments. Okay. Next up, the finance development promotional committee for the Heritage Center. This is Trish Clunin.
Thank you. You have a really nicely prepared annual report from the Heritage Center Committee, which I'm sorry, my dog just got a new toy. So I also just want to point out a few dates. March 9th, the Heritage Center will be opening for the year with an exhibit on it's a kind of a hat party or hats off to spring exhibit. And a couple of dates to keep in mind. April 27th, there'll be a a lecture on the history of North Park that should be very interesting. And May, the Heritage Center will be celebrating its five-year anniversary, and there is a lot of work going on for a golf outing on May 20th. And so keep an eye out on our social media and website for these events coming in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any public comments or questions for these two committees?
I don't have anybody in the chat box.
Okay, thank you. This concludes our reports.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, the town managers report.
I've all received a copy of the report. A couple of things that I did want to bring up, we have advertised the project on resurfacing the tennis courts at Devlin Park. And we will be receiving those bids in March, and we would expect council be able to take action on those bids next month. We are continuing to receive reference material from other from other communities that the consulting firms that submitted proposals for the ambulance authority study. So we're getting feedback from those references and reviewing that. That should be complete shortly. And you all received a copy of a summary that Gateway Engineers prepared the state bridge inspection reports that we received every two years on the town's half dozen bridges. The I am pleased to say that the work that needs to be done is maintenance in nature and not any structural deficiencies. We are addressing those. We had been planning to address those maintenance issues in a project that's being put out to bid this year. And we're also looking at a replaced scheduled replacement of a bridge slash culvert on Blazer Drive near Ingamar Road. So those are moving forward. Bottom line is that we're on it and there's there's no problem with failure of structures or potential failure of structures with our bridges. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Graham, town's attorney report.
I'm sorry. I I
I'm sorry, Kim. I didn't see your name. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's okay. I appreciated the stormwater update that was in your report. I also wanted to throw out there, I haven't heard it mentioned before, is that we do have a when we're looking at areas to help remediate storm water or to look for places to kind of hold back some stormwater. I think it might be worth evaluating the area behind the town behind Public Works, actually, that kind of works as an informal floodplain and hold that might actually be an area that we could do something with when we apply for some funding. It's the only thing it would be good for that I could think of, but when we're looking at all of our stormwater places, that looks like a good place. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something under our nose we were missing. Another thing I want to make sure that there were four pickleball courts that were included on those tennis courts.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't want to have to deal with the pickleball ladies if they forgot them.
You'll deal with them is them thanking you.
Okay, they're going to teach me how to play pickleball. The other thing is I I noticed that under your sidewalk section, you didn't have the passive sidewalks. We still working on that?
Yes, we are.
Perfect. Okay, all right. They just weren't there. I just want to make sure they weren't lost either.
No.
Bob, do you have an update on the passive and sidewalks?
They we've been in touch back and forth with the vice president of operations there. They're talking with They're talking with their construction people. And then we're going to be setting a meeting with those construction people to see how they fit that project into their overall construction plans that they're undertaking now.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the town manager? Seeing none. Onto the town's attorney report.
Our report was submitted part of the packet, happy to answer any questions or discuss it in executive session or offline as the case often is with legal matters.
Yeah. I guess we'll leave it at that since some of the things we can't talk about here. Okay, moving on to old business. Is is there any that anybody wanted needed to bring up? See any under new business moving on? We have a land development application for McCannla Square. Maybe RJ, do you want to tee it up and then?
Sure, and Sandy, if you could just toss me the co-host designation, I can make sure that we get the right stuff screen shared. While you are doing that, just a quick outline. You all have seen phase one, which was the senior living component a couple of years ago. Phase two, which is more recently approved as the retail and you know, general food service component that was on the north side of the McCannla Square development. Now we're moving on to the westernmost portion, which originally had been slated as a flex sort of office or retail use. Of course, as we've discussed many times in the last couple of years, COVID changed market conditions and what was kind of feasible. And office space was not necessarily one of those things anymore. So the developer had pivoted to, excuse me, to include town homes instead is phase three. That change was approved through a master plan amendment like late last year. And they are coming back now with the actual land development and subdivision plan. I believe there are 54, 53, 54 units, I want to say, as well as some two car driveways for each of the units and some auxiliary parking space areas as well as shared parking between the previous phases of the development. So I have got on the line Jerry Kledowski, who is the project manager for this as well as Marty Gillespie, who is the developer for Laurel Communities, who is working on this in partnership with the main developer MSRP. So guys, if you want to go ahead and join, let me know if you want me to pull up any of the land development plans as you present.
Yeah, RJ, this is Jerry. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
All right, yeah, if you want to pull up just the site plan, that would be fine.
Sure, okay.
I think you did a fantastic job explaining the whole iteration of everything that's gone on with the project. So that saves me a little bit of breath.
Hey, I try.
Yeah, you are correct, though. There are 54 town homes. We have 19 of them on the the northern side of the property and then 35 on the southern side of the property.
Oh, it got really tiny there for a second. Those town homes are not that small. Okay, let's see here.
Yes, you want to go up to 200.
And there we go. Sorry, everyone, it's a big file, so it's a little tough to get it to load.
Yeah, so this is, this is the general layout plan, the site layout plan and the the dark boxes of the town homes. And as I indicated before, there's 19 on the upper side, there's 35 on the lower side. All of the town homes on the lower side have, they all have two car integral garages and as well as two car driveways that are between 18 and 20 feet long on the northern portion. Those town homes, there are several up by the retail. There's five there that have driveways that can accommodate, but all of these ones also have two car integral garages. And we actually added some surface parking there to increase the parking count. One of the ideas behind this development was to create an integrated project with the surrounding developments, both the senior living, the cottage homes, the retail development. So all of these properties have cross access easements, cross parking easements. They share utilities, they share roadways and sidewalks. And it's meant to be a walking community. So all of those things are incorporated into this plan. We've gone through a couple of rounds of comments with Gateway Engineers and we've made some some adjustments in plantings. We've managed to reduce imperviousness of the overall development from what was originally proposed when we came in back in 2019 with the overall campus plan and the assisted living plans. So there's a benefit there. All of the stormwater for this project was addressed with the original submission. There is a large stormwater pond that is located on the the far east side of the project as well as a small one on the you can actually see the small one there on the the south side of the assisted living. So all of the stormwater drains to these two facilities and is discharged at less than predeveloped rates. And as I indicated before, we've with this project, we've reduced going from the flex office to town homes, we reduce the overall pavement by roughly an acre, an acre and a half somewhere in that neighborhood. So there's a lot more green space on this plan than what we originally proposed. Some of the the only outstanding comments that Gateway had are are the standard comments, the sewage facilities, planning module, exemption approval, we have plans and the exemption into MTSA for their review. We have not received comments back. Our NPDS permit, which is it's an existing permit for the whole site. But we're required to go back and do a modification to the plans just to show the new controls for this side of the project. That has also been submitted, but it's still outstanding. And the town will receive copies of both of those approvals once we read, once we receive them. All of the utilities are currently on site. We would have to update a loop for water line for these for both sets of town homes there. We do have plans in with Westview Water. Our our idea is that this is all going to be a a public water line system that just adds on to the existing loop that's already there. We we have plans at them for approval. We haven't received any any comments back. But all of utilities are there on the site. It's just a matter of providing some services to the individual units. Marty, I don't know if you want to say anything about the about the plan other than what I've just gone over.
No, I think that's a good summary and you know, we can answer any questions that anybody might have.
RJ, I'm not sure who the best is. What is, can you, can someone go through what the modification request number one is in the motion?
Um, I I can cover that. And then if the developer has anything to add, they can chime in. So basically, uh, the way that our parking code, which as we've discussed is pretty generous. That's something that we're looking at as part of the zoning ordinance update. In our parking code, it requires two off street parking spaces for any residential dwelling unit exclusive of an interior garage. So functionally, what this means is that every single unit needs to have four off street parking spaces accounted for. Now, with this particular plan, because some of the driveways up in this area are a little shorter than you would normally be able to fit, you know, a standard sized car off of the street. Although they all have two car garages, that was not sufficient for each of those to have two off street parking spaces. They did add quite a few parking bays, you know, for whether it's visitor parking, just somebody, you know, that for whatever reason couldn't park in their garage. They would have needed 108 total off street spaces, counting the driveways and these parking bays here. Whereas they are providing in their proposed plan 93 total. That's for exclusive use of the town homes. There are an additional, I want to say 34 spaces that are also provided in other phases of the development. This was something we talked about in phase two, where there are cross parking agreements between the different phases. And some of the properties are owned by one developer, some are owned by another. So those would also be available for the town home visitors, residents, you know, what have you at any time. I think that this is a pretty reasonable compromise, you know, just in my view, between preserving the lowered impervious surface area that was achieved in this revised phase, also green space. For example, if you all can see my mouse pointer here in this area by units 11 and 12, there were actually originally going to be more units. But the developer was willing to lose a couple in order to provide a more green space courtyard area, which was a request of mine early on. So we would have to lose those green space areas like say in here with this triangle courtyard and this to achieve more parking specifically on the town home site. So with the cross agreement, it can meet our code. But with just this site, it's 15 shy and that's what the alternate parking standard request is about.
Thank you.
I thought the modification was related to parking on Hopkins Street.
Well, so there there was a specific condition that the majority of planning commission members requested be included that Hopkins Street, which is this interior road right here, not allow on street long term parking. So things like, you know, short term utility issue or a delivery truck or, you know, mail, something like that. They could park here, but that the planning commission felt that because these streets are pretty narrow, I want to say maybe 24 feet wide. They didn't want people to be able to permanently park on the street. And most likely that won't be an issue because almost all of this frontage along here is driveway. But just in case the the developer has agreed to memorialize that in the HOA documents as well.
RJ, will the town take over these streets?
As far as I know, these are meant to be private.
That's correct.
Anybody else on council have any questions for the developers or RJ?
Quick question. So will they, will you guys manage the snow removal then? That would maybe be more a question for public works, but I'm guessing that would probably be taken care of by the HOA. Okay.
Carolyn, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody other, anyone else on council have any comments? Questions, concerns? No, okay. Hearing none. Anyone like to attempt a very long motion?
I'll take this.
Kim, go ahead.
Motion to approve the development land development application for the mechanist square face three townhouses planned submitted by Laurel Communities located on Blazer Drive block lots 945 dash at dash 301 and 945 dash B dash 35 contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the planning and development staff report dated February 16th, 2022. Plan approval includes approval modification number one as identified in the attached staff report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there anyone from the community that would like to have any comments before we before council votes? And anyone wasn't on here earlier, again, type your name and address in the chat box and we'll give you the microphone.
I do not have any, I don't have anybody in the chat box at this moment.
Okay. Very good. Okay, there's a motion. Present everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any any opposed? No, motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the next item. Regional asset district funds. Bob, do you want to tee this up for everybody?
For for those of you who have not been on council for more than a couple of years, the town normally looks at its revenues that are realized from the regional asset district, the Allegheny County sales tax and the portion that comes to the town. Each year we have to do a calculation of revenues derived from that tax compared to the year prior and then distribute 25% of that. If there is an increase year over year, distribute 25% digital based entity. This year we've we've done that calculation and we have over $13,000 in funds that need to be distributed. We had received 52,400 more year over year. Partly you see the impacts of COVID in that, but in any case, it was a $52,000 increase, 25% of that is $13,116. The town historically has given that those funds either to the library or the ambulance authority. So we wanted to have a discussion how you would like that distributed and then move forward with a resolution if you're comfortable with that.
Okay. So I guess let's start for members on council. Are we okay with with just keeping with history that we we give that money to either war or both of both of those? Isn't that yay nay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So then I guess the decision is library or ambulance, do we split that $13,000 evenly? Or do we for more maximum impact, do we give it to one entity? So what's everyone think, Kim?
Um, I'd like to recommend the entire amount go to the ambulance authority. We don't have not historically provided monetary support for them, which we do the library. I think for fundraising, the ambulance authority is much more limited on its ability to fundraise. And so it's, I think it's not a lot of money in the scope of costs. But they do have a lot of mandates of things that they're required to buy that are unfunded and that this would go to help some of that. And they have are reorganizing and changing some things over there, trying to get the cost down. And I think it would show good faith by us to support some of the changes that they're making.
Thank you, Kim. Does anybody want to chime in, Mr. Singer?
Yes, I'm the liaison for the library authority. So I cannot stand up and say, obviously, I would like to see the library get some, obviously. We chose to, the previous council chose not to fully fund their budget. That resorted them back to last year's budget. They are in budget constraints. You know, it is a great resource for the area. We talked about community outreach in activities and things that affect and how low our budget number is for that. And we have an organization right here in the town that provides those resources. I think this is a hard thing, no matter what. I think honestly, the more fair opinion in my mind is to split it down the middle. Both organizations need it. I wish, and I'm sure everyone on this board wishes we could fund them all with everything we have. But I think the the proper and fair thing to do is split it in half and give what we can to each. That would be my opinion.
What about Carolyn?
I was gonna say I agree with Jason. That's what I was just to.
To split it?
Yeah.
Okay. Jack, Tricia.
I I would agree. Oh, I'm sorry. I think Jack might be talking, but his mic.
Jack's muted.
Somebody unmute him.
Sandra.
Okay, well, as the senior representative on the board, if an ambulance shows up, I would rather have an ambulance show up that's fully staffed with whatever it needs versus somebody with who is a librarian show up. I love my library, don't get me wrong, and I did use it in COVID. But I think we really, if if we're mandated by law to support the health of welfare of the community, I think that would I would fall on the side of giving the money to the ambulance authority.
And so you're for the full amount going to one.
Going to the ambulance authority, because it's it's only 13,000. What are you going to do? I mean, that they won't buy anything as a medical instrument these days.
Yeah. Yeah.
And seven thousand buys much less.
Yeah. Ms. Clunin?
Uh, I was gonna, I think I'm more in favor with splitting. I think they're, both of the library and the ambulance authority are vital to our community. Um, it's, what's what makes McCandless great is the participation of these kind of things. And I think, you know, Jason said it well, we would love to give more money, everybody. Needs money and rightfully so, needs money and needs more and with the way things are with budgets, et cetera. You know, I'll be honest, my first inclination was to give it all to the library, but, uh, you know, hearing. You know, the fact that the ambulance authority is moving forward with the requests we have been making. And, you know, I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing. Uh, you know, some improvement in their operating. And, and I think it would be good to say, you know what, we appreciate you taking these steps to forward. And we want to support you in that, so my vote would be to split it.
But it, Dr. Rappa?
I don't see her on here anymore.
Still on?
I don't see her on anymore, I believe she's offline.
Okay, do we know? I guess we don't know when it happened, if she's just trying to hop back on or she's off permanently.
I don't know, she just disappeared from the screen, so I'm not quite sure.
How about you, Mike?
Since Kathy's not here, don't want to create a, a tie, so we'll say split it. So, um. If that's. Yeah, so that, that would be, I think there's four, that would be four people that said split into. That said to, to focus it. So. We, we would, what, make this, if someone chooses to make a motion, we would do this and name. Steve or Bob, how would we do this?
Jason Singer, I'll make a motion to adopt, adopt the tentatively then-on-side resolution number two of twenty-two and two. Resolution distributing excess regional asset district funds. These be split evenly amongst the McCandless Township Ambulance Authority and the Northland Public Library.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Ms. Clunin's a second? Okay. Uh, are there anyone in the public that would have a comment on this before we? Before we vote? Sandra, anybody?
Don't, I don't have anyone just yet, but.
Okay.
Anyone who wants to make a comment, please enter your name and address into the chat box. I don't see anybody now.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to split. The funding between the library and the ambulance authority. Everyone in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Word one?
Nay.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Yeah.
Word four?
Yay.
Word five, Kathy. Word six?
Aye.
Word seven?
Aye.
Motion passes, and I have Kathy on my phone, she's going to just listen in from my phone. She ran into problems with her. Signal.
Understood.
Kathy? Can you hear me?
Okay. Bob, you want, do you want to set up the next one for us?
Okay, the, the next item is a. Resolution requesting a. Authorizing that we seek grant funding through the statewide local share assessment grant. Program of the Commonwealth Financing Authority, uh, this money would be used. Toward the replacement of Town Hall HVAC system and windows.
This would pay for all of it, Bob, we need, this would pay for half of it, what's the?
This will, this will pay for the vast majority of it, um, it's based on some older. Um, estimates that we have, so. Price escalation might be the only thing, I, I would say it's probably an eighty percent grant at this point. Just to be safe.
What is the timing on that? Do we know, when would we know?
Um, we probably won't know for. About three months following the. The submission, so sometime in June.
Could we continue with it, since it's funded, could, I mean, in our budget? Can we continue with the design and procurement and then? Once we get the decision, whether it's yes, we got the grant or no, we can make a decision. Basically have it a shovel-ready project, for lack of a better term?
We, we could. We could go as far as the design to have a shovel-ready.
Okay, but we would, we need to wait for the bidding period, which only takes usually a couple weeks, so, okay. Anybody have any other questions of Bob about what this is?
Bob, does that include a good filtration system and possibly UV lights? To stabilize the air?
This was, I think it included some improvement to the, uh, to the ventilation system, but not the UV. We would have to look at that as added. Uh, cost, but we can, we can talk to the engineers about that.
Well, with the advent of COVID and everything, I think it'd probably be prudent to do that.
Sure.
Any other questions for Bob? No? Someone like to make a motion? Ms. Clunin?
A second.
Uh, do I need to read it or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, move to adopt tentatively identified resolution number three of twenty twenty-two. A resolution requesting a statewide local share assessment grant of eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. From the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for replacement of Town Hall HVA systems and windows.
Do we have a second, Mr. Casey?
Second.
Second, okay. And does anyone in the meeting that's a member of our community like to make a comment? Sandra, any takers yet?
Nobody yet.
Okay. Very good. Uh, there's a motion on the table, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Next one is the Personnel Board distributed to us. Uh, in our packets, and I think it was before then, I think, Bob, you, you sent it out. Uh, proposed changes to police officer qualific- qualifications. Bob, what's the best way to handle this, because you're probably gonna get. Some opinions from different people, just.
First off, Sandy, can you unmute Ryan?
Yes, I, I have, anybody can mute themselves or unmute themselves whenever they want to, but I will ask him to unmute himself.
Good evening.
Honestly, I think that the. What I will do, if, if it's fine with the rest of you, would be to simply open up. The discussion for questions or discussion. But why don't we go section by section? So that we keep it a little more organized. So the first section, the rules of procedure. Uh, section one thirty-seven oh five, the only change would be that. Just. The minutes approved, just have the minutes approved. Uh, but not necessarily have to be signed by the, the chairman, they could be signed by. Uh, myself or somebody else who had been taking them. Any issues with that?
If we're going to change the composition of the board. Um, that, that would need to be, um, the first line in there, while it's not a change, would need to be changed.
Oh, rather than two affirmative?
Right.
So this would be subject to that.
Right, 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 but we're, we're not gonna adopt this tonight, so we may. Yeah, right.
Put this, put the timing, or figure the timing out around that.
Right. Perfect.
Section one thirty-seven oh five, rules of procedures, this is where we have. Some of the other significant changes, uh, letter oh, two oh two qualifications. A, uh, moving from eighteen to twenty-one years of age.
Bob, I just to go back real quick, that section that Ms. Zachary just identified. Is actually included in the ordinance that changes the membership of the personnel board. I just pulled it up on my screen to make sure that was the case, so we addressed it there.
So we could take this out altogether?
Well, I mean, one's gonna get passed before the other, so I think this one. I don't, I, we'll have to see which way it goes, but I, I, I think it should stay in the one. Um, about the board, but we could still make the change of removing the. Um, signed by the chairman, or you could say, Steve, just put it in the one that I prepared. Either way, we'll work it, we'll work that out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Put our, put our brains together on that.
It's dangerous.
Absolutely, uh, letter B, um. Some changes, some significant changes there, um, with this. Uh, preference would be a bachelor's degree, law enforcement or police-related. Under number one. Under number three, added qualifications. Uh, currently, there's a four-year degree required, um, some. Flexibility built into this to have an associate degree. Uh, from college or university. Or four years of military service, along with two years of employment. Of law enforcement. Questions or comments there? Uh, letter C. Uh, adding the. Provision of a valid driver's license, if somebody is outside the state of Pennsylvania when they apply, that they have a valid driver's license. From that state of residence, along with the requirement that they obtain a Pennsylvania license within sixty days. If appointed. Questions there? Okay. Um, letter J, we've added. The requirement to satisfy requirements of Act fifty-seven pertaining to background checks. And those are related to what you will see under section two oh three. Uh, two.
Bob, I have something, a couple, were you through?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, um, the first thing is I would like to actually add something to F, just to back up a little bit.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Um, be of good moral character. Um, what I would like to see added there, if everyone thought it appropriate. To say, support the town's mission statement of equality, diversity, diversity and inclusion. As well as the police department's mission and philosophy statement that Chief Hawk is actually currently working on.
Any?
I have no, I have no issue with that.
Either.
Okay. Sounds good.
On the background checks. Um, I, I believe that we already actually do this, but it would hurt to spill it out. To say that all. Would that be a place where you put background checks as well as all social media? Things, handles, whatever. I don't know if that's the right place, but.
I think it would come up in the, in, in the next section, um, under section two B.
I wasn't sure which would be better.
Yeah, I, I see it in, in underneath to be there, but I definitely, I agree, that was one of my notes too, to have the social media check as well.
As long as it's somewhere.
I like it, but what's the bar and who's the determiner that it's appropriate or not?
Where do we stand legally with that as well, Steve?
It's, it's permissible to review those things and, and that would be analyzed by the Personnel Board when they are. Taking you through the testing process. You know, I, I can tell you in the past, as the former solicitor for the Personnel Board, that we have. Removed people from the list for failing. The moral character, I think, is probably one that we've used in the past, based on the background check, so. You know, I, I think the ultimate question is to whether what you find on social media is something that is actionable. To remove somebody from the list or from consideration is the more complicated question versus can you look at it? So I'm okay with us looking at it.
Steve, is it, is it redundant with what they have in Act fifty-seven?
No, it's not, it's not redundant, I think it's fine to put it in here.
Okay, go ahead.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. Probably somewhere in the neighborhood, seventy-five percent of social media isn't always accurate. So to put all social media in there, I don't think that would be beneficial.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know about that, that statistic, but. Again, I think it's okay to list it as something that's consulted or part of the review process. But then it's up to the reviewing entity, the Personnel Board here. To decide whether what they find is, you know, something that is, as you said, if it's. Not accurate or not reflective of the person or, or whatnot, then they'll have to wave. Wade through that, and they have a very capable solicitor, Falco Moscante, uh, the Personnel Board that will help them with that.
And if they don't like somebody, they could really just to harm their character.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think it's fine to look at, but I, I think that, you know, whether it can be used to. Remove someone from the, the list, uh, or not hire somebody, that, that will be for the Personnel Board to decide.
I know.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
I know when we discussed this with the Personnel Board, that their goal and hope was that. They just hope to see that everyone has their accounts private and not public and. You know, that nothing's really seen or visible to the public, so that was kind of the goal of checking it out, just to make sure. You know, their accounts were private and nothing's really put out there to the public.
Yeah, I'd like the social media thing added as well.
Okay, we'll put it, we'll add it where it's appropriate to add. Anything else? Okay. Under rule two, police appointments, uh, section two oh three. Uh, number two, we've added a number of. Items that are pertaining to. Uh, satisfying Act fifty-seven, which was adopted in twenty twenty. So all of the provisions, letters A through. G four. Well, actually, J, J two K or decay are all part of Act fifty-seven. So we were required to have those provisions and review those pursuant to that act. So this, this brings us into compliance with Act fifty-seven. Steve, anything else I should add there?
No, I mean, but we could add to it, but we can't take away from what is already listed in the draft here.
That's the whole list, is that what?
Everything, yeah, everything A through K.
I'm good with that. I mean, it's required.
Under J, double I, a criminal conviction related to conduct described in a paragraph. I, could we add under there a criminal or civil conviction? I didn't, I didn't recall seeing anything about any civil convictions, just criminal.
Well, I, I would say that I, I, I understand the distinction, but I would say this, that this requirement is one where MOPAC, which is the state police clearinghouse entity, that's referenced in J, the NPO ETC entity, if we would file a report with them that indicates there was a quote, civil conviction, or found of civil liability is, is more appropriately stated, they, they won't, I don't believe that they'll accept that or, or take it by way of a filing, so. If we, if we are saying that, see, this, what this section is saying is that if we would hire somebody that had binding disciplinary action or was terminated or convicted for any of those items, one through ten, excessive force all the way through a judicial finding of dishonesty, we have to report to, to MOPAC that we did that. And if we add that civil liability to that, to J sub two, I, I don't know if MOPAC would actually accept the filing or that disclosure from the town. That's not part of what they are charged with collecting here. I, I understand the thought behind it, but I'm just not so sure that, that, that that would have any real effect on what we, what MOPAC would do with it.
Could it be added on page three then, under background investigation? Because there again, it just speaks to criminal, not civil.
You mean, add that as part of the background investigation, Ms. Zachary?
Yes.
You could, you could.
With what, with what, with what point to that? I mean, are we gonna? Would do we, are we just adding it that we're looking for any civil, wouldn't that show up in any typical background check?
It just says a criminal history check. It doesn't say a civil one. So that would just give you more information so that you would know.
If you, if you would like to see those kinds of records, you should specifically set, set it forth in that subsection.
I mean, you delve into a whole lot of records when you go into a civil matter. I mean, we could be in the, a lot of stuff for that.
Hopefully, there's not a lot of stuff for that. Hopefully, they haven't had any civil charges. But if they have had a civil charge and a conviction, I do think we need to know that.
Just wait, the, the chart, to say a civil charge, basically, what this would, if, if if we were to search this through a background entity, we would basically take the name, you know, use my name, Steve Corbale, and you would run it through state databases to see if there were ever any civil lawsuits filed against me. And, you know, you would come up empty for me, but for others, it might be things from I, they were, someone tried to evict them. There could be tort claims, you know, Edgar Snyder type claims, I'll get money for you. It could be business claims, they may have had a business with somebody. You know, a, a, and the, so, so you'll know about that, but oftentimes with civil matters, there won't be unless there's a jury determination or a judgment entered by a judge, you know, ninety-eight percent of them will be resolved privately through settlement, and, and that won't be reported, but you'll know that it was an issue where it was filed, so. You know, I can't imagine that there are many police officers that would have large records like that. But, you know, it's, it's not very difficult to wade through that, to find that record if we, if we are interested as a council and looking at that.
Is that common practice with other boards?
You know, a lot of times, I haven't seen that very often. It's mostly around the credit issue that if, if folks are interested as to whether or not you have civil judgments against you where you owe money, and there could be a thought that you are, you could be compromised by somebody over that, the fact that you owe a large debt or debts to folks. But I, I, I'm not familiar with any community that I'm aware of that's ha- has a civil suit issue that they're looking at.
Thank you, Steve.
Do, letter G two and three address that concern?
Although those are that's just a review of back of separation records that in G. So I, I don't think that would be on all fours there.
Okay.
We have a public comment here. I don't know, President, if that's the time to address this, or if we should wait till the end.
Maybe wait till the end through, to or through everything. Yeah, cuz then we, yeah, we're gonna, yeah. Yeah, certainly, we'll get to whoever that was.
I think it's Dave Smith. He may have some advice.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm not for, you know, adding a whole lot more to this, especially if it's not common practice elsewhere right now. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'd probably share Jason's if it's not common practice.
Yeah, this is pretty extensive already. And I think anybody can bring a suit against anybody in this country. It doesn't necessarily mean they settle because they're right or wrong. They might just want to get rid of it and have a judgment against them. I don't know. Steve?
Anybody can indeed sue anybody. Mr. Casey, I always tell my clients that my advice is not going to stop someone from suing you, but hopefully it will help you defend yourself if you are indeed a victim of a lawsuit.
But we, we can look at adding a provision in terms of where we think it, the best fit would be if, if the council feels that we should. Were we holding them to a higher standard than we hold counsel?
Yeah, if no one else is doing it, I, I don't know why we would add that in, in my, again, in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Great.
Any other, any other items before we move forward?
Oh, just on that section, right?
Yes.
Let me be sure where we're at now.
One thirty-seven oh five, rules of procedure.
Yeah, we're up to that point.
Um, I have to say that I would like to keep those scores where they were. I think we have a very high-quality police department, and we have a stellar showing of applicants every time that we have posted a position, as long as I've been on council, quality and quantity both. And I'd like to, for us to keep the same caliber, and so I'd like to see those passing percentages stay the same.
I think I'd agree with Kim, as long as we have, we still have a pool left to, to pull from.
Is this regarding new hires? This is regarding appointments, you know, promotions? What is this regarding?
This is new hires.
What is our current status lately? I mean, understand the, the conditions of the times where we are, there's not as many police officers applying. Where, what is the standard lately from our last one? Are we still receiving applicants at a normal rate, or has it reduced, or has it increased?
We, I believe that we received a good number of applicants with the last test that we administer. A lot has changed since then, cuz that was in two thousand eighteen, I believe.
Yeah, I, I, I hold the same sentiment as the President does here, as, you know, as long as we have a, a good number, those numbers are more than adequate in my time, but you know, if we see that number fall, you know, that would be my concerning factor.
Well, I think the result of that is that you would just simply test more quickly again. You just wouldn't have it as deep a pool, so you would have to go through the testing process again.
That's twice as much time and twice as much cost.
No, no argument with that. It's just the double-edged sword, there's no doubt.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I am a little surprised at the, the dramatic drop, you know, the recommendation from eighty-five to seventy. More stomachable would have been, you know, something down to eighty or something. Does that affect a, a, a lower, lowered number? But not as drastic. I'm sorry, go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I, so, and I, does Ryan know how many people applied? Like, how many applicants were in the last? Or Bob, does anyone know? Cuz I thought it was like fifteen or something.
So. I think it was closer to thirty.
Nice size.
Ryan, do you know what the number is?
So the last time we offered the exam, I believe it actually was over fifty. That was, as Bob said, best I can tell, twenty seventeen, maybe we tested twenty eighteen, we might have hired from that list. Those are rough numbers. More recent numbers, but this is not McCandless. You know, I can speak to Franklin Park had fifteen. This, in twenty-one, fifteen apply. I believe Northern Regional might have been somewhere in that same neck of the woods. Now, we haven't, Bob might have said this, we haven't tested in, you know, greater than three years, so I would hope that the town would, would have a nice draw, considering we don't test that often. But there's no guarantee, and like Bob said, you know, things have changed in recent years.
I, I, I could just say anecdotally from my clients and my partner's clients, that we, we have seen a, a decline in the number of applicants for these. And I, I'm not talking about the quality or whether they're able to meet the requirements, just the sheer numbers have dropped, in, in, whenever a test's been offered. I, I, I would say over the last eighteen months or so. Through the manager groups.
And that's something, you know, I, I think I want to say, you know, I'd be more willing to go down to an eighty percent, and again, with the understanding of this is just to get them in the door. We still can pick the best candidate once they're into the door. But I'd hate to pass something now and then not get enough guys in the door, and cost me twice as much to continually repost this to, to find someone, you know. It's, that's my opinion again. I, I, I think maybe I, I'd be stomachable to an eighty percent. Margin.
I think that's a reasonable compromise, cuz we can always not select them.
Yeah, I would agree with the eighty percent too. I mean, we've also said in the past that, you know, some people are just not the best test takers, but they have all the other qualities that we need, so I think eighty percent's fair.
I'm with Kim, keep it high. Fifteen's still a good, a good pool.
Fifty, Chief Hawk said, five oh.
Oh, yes.
Fifty.
Trish?
I would say I, eighty percent minimum for me.
You have a Kate to change it then?
Yeah, I don't, I, I still not clear on, you know, the reason, I guess, only just to open a pool, if there, if we've, we haven't had the experience where, you know, we were standing around scratching our heads, we need more people to apply. So I feel like we're, it might be a reaction unnecessary, and I, I know times have changed in the past three, four years, and, and becoming an officer is a different thing for a lot of people right now, but I think McCandless, from what I understand from others in the field, is still a very ideal place to work and serve a community, and I think that we don't have to lower our standards for that.
So you're to keep it or to, to change them both to eight?
I, if, if it's gonna change, I would not want it to go below eighty, but I'm in favor. I would rather keep it at eighty-five.
What's Dr. Rappo say? I think she's the.
I'd say no lower than eighty percent.
So that means change it, or that means only change it if we have to? I'm sorry, Bob, would?
He's just said yes. Do you, would you like to see it changed to eighty percent, Kathy, or leave it at? It's at eighty-five currently.
I would never go lower than eighty percent, because like I said before, you can have really, really good people who just can't take tests. And you're gonna lose out on some good people, so eighty percent would be for me.
It appears she have, she, she wants to change it, Bob, is that what you're interpreting?
That's how I'm interpreting.
Okay. All right, looks like it's four members wanted to be eighty.
Okay. And I would, the oral score, would we keep that at eighty percent then?
That's what I'm hearing from people is eighty.
Okay. The next section, two oh five contenders will make that change to eighty percent for the passing score. And then eliminated the last line. And then just that last section, we ended the, the sentence after the word examination deleted the, the reference to placement in the top twelve if provided with veterans' preference after the world exam.
Seemed redundant.
It did. Steve, you have any comment on that?
I'm, I'm fine with the change. I mean, it's basic, usually you tack the veterans' preference points on at the end. And this is putting them on in an earlier stage so somebody could continue on. I mean, it's it's really up to you all, if you want to do that, you're permitted to do it if you would like. And this is different than the veterans' preference, if you are one of the folks that are the, for an initial hire, if you're one of the top three listed, if you are a veteran, you move to the top of the list. I mean, if there's more than one, then council gets to choose.
I'm, I'm, I'm on board. I'm good.
Okay.
Great.
For section two oh eight, the list of eligibles, we'll leave, we'll make those changes on the passing scores, as we noted previously.
The second one, was it a different percent?
It was.
It's eighty-five going to seventy, and you had.
But we'll, we'll keep that at eighty for the written score, and I understood to keep it at eighty for the oral score.
I think that's what, that's what the majority wanted above.
And that's what I agreed to above was eighty and eighty. And that's what I agreed to above was eighty and eighty.
Okay.
Eighty and eighty, yep.
And then um under rule three, section three oh three um composite score. Um, we'll have to say eighty percent of the minimum passing score. Composite score shall be sixty percent of the written uh proposed and forty percent of the oral score. Placing more weight on the oral score than previously uh noted. Any issues with, with that change?
No.
No.
For that.
Just okay. And, okay, anything beyond what we discussed?
Bob, what is the, um, after we've offered a position, we've selected officer, we, um, they have to, I know they have to pass a physical test. Is, there's a psychological exam too they have to pass, right? Isn't it two of those things? Okay, all right. And that's not part of this because that's after we've offered the position, because none of that was mentioned in here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I say one thing though. I know in past we discussed, um, could we, you know, before we get into the, you know, interview and all that kind of good stuff, have them do the physical test? Because I know the one individual failed and it kind of, you know, it was a waste of time to do the interviews and stuff with council. When, had they all done the physical part, we would have known who passed it or who didn't.
When you're, you're, you're referring to the physical agility test and the actual.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, one suggestion, uh, communities handle this differently, uh, community by community. Um, in some cases, um, the physical agility test is uh done for the entire group prior to the written test. You don't pass the physical agility test, you don't take the written test. And then you don't have, you don't move forward. Um, it, it's more time consuming, potentially a little more costly if you're having somebody administer that uh, physical agility test, but you know, from the beginning, who's going to, who passes and who doesn't. Um, you know, the way the McCandless has done it is that uh, we have offered the position contingent upon a physical agility test, a physical and a psychological test. So we're only dealing with the one.
What's, what's most cost effective? Because it sounds like if we ask for the physical test, we'll spend cash on the other way if we do which vice versa. Is what we're doing most cost effective?
I, I would say what we're doing is most cost effective. They just, the only downside, as Carolyn mentioned, uh, we had a candidate that, uh, I think that we liked. Um, otherwise, wasn't able to they passed the physical agility test. So we had to move on to another candidate.
But if we flip that and we do the physical first, then they might not pass the written and will be at the cost of the physical one. So.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see a problem with keeping things the way they are. It's just a matter of how we we want to handle this.
We, we got through the whole thing, right, Bob?
We got through the whole thing.
Before we call on anyone in the, uh, from the community, is anyone else on council have any specific question or concern before I ask for those? No? Okay. Sandra, do we have somebody?
We do. The first person who'd like to make comment is David Smith. I will ask him to unmute.
Okay. Mr. Smith, floor is yours.
Hi all. Uh, I, you know, honestly, I think you all um addressed what I was gonna say anyway. Um, I was just gonna say, as you know, in by hiring before, I'd be very reluctant to pull in civil matters because they can be anything. Um, and there were, I, I essentially never took it into account at the restaurant. Um, because they could just be anything. Uh, but it sounds like a majority of folks are leaning that way anyway. So that was all I was gonna add to that. Um, which isn't really adding anything at this point. So.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. So Bob, what are the next steps here? Refreshing it up and we don't come in front of council?
We have one more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, Amy Worsman.
Hi, everyone. Amy Worsman. Just wanted to make a comment. I'm the current chairperson of the Personnel Board. Um, I think Jason had said this well, but in um lowering the scores for the passing, we weren't necessarily looking to accept a lower quality candidate. We were simply looking to broaden the pool, perhaps get more diverse uh candidates. Um, people who aren't necessarily great at test taking, that kind of thing. So uh, so that was, that was the thought there. The Personnel Board has um discussed all of these things at great length and great depth with lots of input um from the members of the board and the alternates and and whatnot. So, you know, just know that we were not haphazardly trying to lower the score or just throwing numbers out there. But there was a reason to the rhyme, if you will, for, for all of these items. Um, and we'd be happy to talk about them and we're happy to uh take your input and make those changes because we really, none of us have ever been through this process. You know, I've been on the board the longest and it's been three years. So we've never done this before. So we're curious to see how it goes, but we certainly don't want to waste anyone's time in having, in, in advertising and then getting too small of a pool and having to advertise again. So that was some of the thinking there.
Amy, thank you for the context and thank you for your service to town.
Thank you.
Okay. Sandra, anybody else?
No, there's, there is no one else.
Okay. Next steps here, Bob, is what?
Next, we will make these adjustments, um advertise the ordinance and then include it on an upcoming agenda.
Okay. Very good. All right. Uh, okay, moving on here. Um, purchase of a front end loader. Uh, is Tricia still on? Do you want to give us the?
Yeah.
We're better check. It, it was in the budget, right? That's what we're looking to.
Items are items that are in the budget. Um, with the addition of the loader that was swapped out for the boom mower. Um, Public Works Department has done an assessment of the loader and based on some possible necessary, I'm sorry, not possible, but necessary maintenance that is forthcoming. We are asking to replace the boom mower purchased this year with a loader. Um, there is a savings uh attached to that from what we had budgeted. Also, the body and accessories that go with the dump truck that was approved at the last meeting. Um, as well as the replacement vehicle for the building inspector are on the agenda this evening.
Yeah. So, letter E, the front end loader, that's the swap out, but the hundred and forty-nine thousand is less than what we budgeted for the other thing?
Correct.
Okay. And then item F, that one seventeen is roughly what we budgeted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Tricia. And then same with the, the truck.
Difference, but we're gonna make it up by only purchasing one pre-trier instead of two.
I'm sorry, Tricia, which one was, what was that?
With, with the body and the spreader and the plow, there were, in hitch, there was a slight increase over the quoted purchase in the budget. So we are going to swap out that uh little higher price with one of the pre-traders and only get one this year.
Okay.
Is there plans to add it to next year's?
Yes, as quickly as we can after the first of the year. Plans already in place.
I, I still would like to hold sentiment that, you know, we explore the, the possibility of leasing at some point um for our heavy equipment. You know, I know Co-Stars does do leasing programs. I think it's something it would warrant, you know, exploration going forward.
I agree.
Good, good idea. Okay, there's some housekeeping. I'm sorry.
Good question. Um, I know I'm, I'm jumping in head to spots here, but uh, letter G, is it an Explorer or Interceptor? That is being purchased because what was in the packet said Interceptor, but um, the agenda says Explorer. And they're very different vehicles.
It's the, it's the Interceptor. It's a Explorer body. That's my semantics in, in writing the motion.
Because I, I'd much rather drive an Interceptor myself.
Yeah, actually is a better price, better price to get the Interceptor as opposed to the Explorer.
Because I had an Explorer years ago. I think it is, it would be awesome. Okay.
Okay, who wants to, who wants to do the first motion?
Jason Singer. Motion to approve the purchase of the front end loader for the Department of Public Works at the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents under Co-Stars contract number four four zero 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 one nine nine six five.
Second.
Second permission, Swiger. Uh, do we need public comment for this?
Good. Since it's a purchase.
No, it's just a purchase. Okay. Uh, every.
Actually should, I think, since it, there is money being expended.
Okay. All right. Uh, as we've said before, if you want to make a comment on this, please put uh your name in the chat box. And Sandra, let us know if anybody's there.
There's nobody at this time.
Okay. Hearing no public comment. Uh, there's a motion on the table to approve the purchase of front end loader. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, the dog. Motion passes. Uh, who wants to take it, the, the dump truck body?
Jason Singer, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of dump truck body, salt spreader, snowplow for the Department of Public Works in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and one dollars under Co-Stars contract number zero two five dash zero two one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey's the second. Okay. Public comment before we vote. Sandra?
There is no one in the chat.
No one. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the dog's silent this time. Motion carries. And the last one over the equipment. Anyone want to make a, miss, get Miss Swiger, please.
Okay, motion to approve the purchase of the Ford Explorer for the Buildings Inspection Department for replacement of existing vehicle in amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred under Co-Stars contract number thirteen dash one ten.
Have a second from anybody, Mr. Singer. Okay. Any comments from the public, Sandra?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Motion on the table, everybody in favor of the Ford Explorer purchase, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Activities Committee, uh, Carolyn, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so motion to appoint Deb Sagan as a member of the Activities Advisory Committee for a term to end nine thirty twenty-five.
Second.
Second by Ms. Clunin. Uh, this does not need, does this need public comment? No, yes.
But we, we asked for public comment on all agenda items earlier, so we're not legally required to, but you can always ask.
Well, no one asks. Okay. Motion uh to appoint everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Carolyn, the second one?
Motion to appoint Nicole Farin as a member of the Activities Advisor Committee for a term to end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Ms. Clunin, I think got her hand up. Uh, everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. And the last item, um, a while back, uh, we had voted to go to vert, hundred percent virtual meetings until I think the end of March. Uh, the landscape has changed on us and I just wanted to float out there if we wanted to keep that or if we wanted to change it so then our first meeting in March uh would be back to the hybrid format. Um, any comments from my fellow council members?
Um, you know, as I voted last time, I, I think, you know, options are available. Um, we've seen the updated CDC guidelines. We've seen our local school district. Um, we did do research um uh with other municipalities and what they're doing. Um, I know there's been some discussions with our staff in Town Hall about uh the best ways to protect them. Um, and having um either ourselves or other members help to run the meetings. Um, you know, I, I would think, you know, for our benefit, for our public's benefit, um, you know, following sunshine law and our town charter, um, that we go back to a hybrid type meeting, you know, effective um March first.
Ms. Clunin?
Uh, I just have a question in terms of communicating with our residents. Is there a certain amount of time that we'd need to provide notice that the format was changing?
Good point.
Um, I think we can, the majority of the initial ads were assumed a hybrid meeting. Um, as long as we have twenty-four hours to, I think, make them aware of that, I think we're, we're in good shape. So we should, we shouldn't have any issue.
Thank you.
Anybody else feel strongly one way or another?
I'd like to hear from our admin staff that don't have the choice to be hybrid or not.
Bob, Tricia, Sandra. Well, yeah, who, who has to be in the room?
Well, I, I would want either myself or Tricia in the room, uh, Sandra or RJ as the host of the uh the Zoom portion of, of this. My feeling is that I, you know, I, I have to be more careful now than I, I did or thought I would have to in the past. Um, I can mask, um, or Tricia and I can offset uh locations. Uh, my feeling is that there, there are some options. Uh, I'm not as, quite as comfortable with live as I once was. But I will do what the majority of the uh, the council wants to do. That's my job. Unfortunately, I just have to find a way to, to make it work. Tricia, you have any thoughts?
I'm comfortable um with the hybrid model. And my question would be, as, are we making a determination now if, when we're in the person with us being at the low level, will we be wearing masks or unmasked?
CDC guidances, we're in a low spread, so there's no masks from what I read.
Masks are optional, personal, personal. I, I can say that I would continue to mask.
I, I can offer, you know, I'm more than willing to train and learn any way necessary if, if um, you know, you need me to help out any way in the room. If you need me to help set up bikes beforehand and help run that meeting, um, I'm more than willing to help be that person in the room at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I was gonna say I support going hybrid um with the option of allowing, you know, staff to, if you want to do this from home, Bob, I totally get it. I, and I respect that. And um, I think it's, it's, I still think everyone needs to do what's, what's best for them and their health. And I mean, I have a cold right now. My kids do. I don't know. You know, hopefully it's, it's just a cold, but you know, with things going around, I, I get it and I totally respect that, you know, some people just need to do their, their work from home.
Yeah, Bob, I, I, I'm in support of a hybrid model, but I'm a hundred percent fine if you call in from home or your office and, you know, you're down the hall or something from us and Tricia's there in person.
Yeah, and that, we, we can make that work, that I could still be available, but not.
Yeah, not. Yeah.
I agree a hundred percent. And Jason, I'd be more than willing to help you with technology, but I can't even get in with my new iPad.
I'd like to make a motion um to return to hybrid meetings um for Town Council effective March first, twenty twenty-two.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, Karen, Ms. Swiger.
I do want to say that we do have a public comment.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Sandra, who's with us?
Uh, Dr. Arvin Venkat.
Okay. Hello, everybody. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, first of all, thanks for allowing me to join you. Um,
I just wanted to comment that I, I agree that it's appropriate to go back to hybrid. I had commented when you were making this decision in January that we were in a very different circumstance when cases were going through the roof. And really the issue was that our public services were very much threatened in their capacity. That's obviously not the case now. And the level of transmission that is blown through our community means that the level of immunity that is there, both from vaccines and from disease exposure for the near future is likely to be very high. I would recommend to you that in going to hybrid, that for those who are attending in person, either that they be advised that on an individual basis, if they feel that they are at risk, that they should try and wear a high quality mask such as a KN ninety-five or N ninety-five. And/or that you have a supply of those masks in the room so that people who do feel like they're individually at risk can wear that because that is a way to reduce the level of transmission on top of the other protections that are there. So I just wanted to make that suggestion to you as council as another way that you might be able to support. But the safety concerns as well as the communication and community involvement concerns you're trying to balance.
I agree with Dr. Venkat.
Thank you, doctor.
Yeah, that's easy enough that we can provide those mask. One doctor, one thing that I didn't see in the CDC guidance had to do with social distancing. Any.
Yeah, I would say, you know, the, the whole issue with social distancing, especially in a, the committee room where the council room that you have is, um, the level of transmissibility of the Omicron variant is such that three feet, six feet, it really is not that clear how well that works. Um, and similarly cloth masks, for example, don't really do a lot. Um, what we do know is that higher quality masks can make a difference. And so on an individualized basis, I think having that available to members of the public who are there is probably the most prudent thing to do. Um, and again, the level of transmission in our community now is so low and our capacity to treat people is so much better and triage people who might be exposed to the virus and even to prevent severe illness with intervention in between with monoclonal antibodies. We're in a far different place than we were even a month ago. And so I think that you're, you're on the right track to make the decision and this is another safety measure you can take.
Very good.
Doctor, thank you for the advice. Thank you for all that you do for our community and Kim, thank you as well. I know it was a tough couple of months, cuffed up a tough couple of years for the, uh, the medical community and thank you both. Um, all right, we have a motion on the table to return to hybrid meetings, March one. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Last item, if there's any public, uh, comments on non-agenda items, again, you know, the, the drill, just put your name in the chat box. Sandra, do we have anybody?
We do not have anybody.
Okay, very good. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Meeting is adj, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Good night, Kathy.